Tuesday, April 9, 2024, calling the Select Board of Wyndham. Meeting to order. In attendance is Diane Bucow.
Peter Quaid.
Deirdre Parati.
Gary Cheeseman.
And our administrative team, and we even have some audience members today. So, welcome. We have 10 minutes reserved for public input. Are there any participants wishing to address the Select Board during the public comment section?
Are there any attendees up there? Is that a zero?
Zero, yes.
Okay.
I don't know why, nobody's here.
It's 4:30.
It's 4:30, yeah. Thank you all for coming at 4:30, I appreciate it. So we have to start with our reports and announcements, so T A S D, want to take it away?
Couple things.
And Ben Timman is here. Oh, good. Careful of the cord, please.
We got, we got notice from Eric Mansfield that they're going to start hydrant flushing. So on Tuesday, April 16th, they're going to start flushing the hydrants and the flushing will continue through May 3rd. Residents may experience a drop in water pressure as well as some slight discoloration. He just wants to stress that that's only temporary and that if the discoloration continues past May 3rd, to contact the Water Department.
Right.
I did see that on social media.
Okay, yeah, we did put that out there. All right, well, you've got an email this morning from Pearl Morris and to notify us that, to notify us that Reverend, sorry, Reverend Dr. Wellesley Roberts of One Enon Road, Wyndham, is retiring after 44 years of service at Gordon College. And he was an adjunct professor of African-American history. And he, they, she was inquiring if the Select Board would be interested in sending a letter of acknowledgement for this milestone or some kind of proclamation, seeing as he is one of Wyndham's outstanding residents. So we will be following his information on, and obviously that decision could be made at a later date.
How many years was he at Gordon?
25 years.
Wow.
So we're, obviously, we're in the process of reopening the school agreement. Dana Lara and myself have had some back and forth. She does have a strong preference to keeping it to the chairs only and Joe Demelwitz and myself. So it looks like she wants to set up at least an initial meeting with the five of us to discuss general areas of concern. So the board probably will add it to the agenda to discuss the areas of concern on the 23rd, so we can begin discussions there. So we'll have some preparation going into that initial meeting.
I think you should talk to Wynd Dodge before.
Will do.
Do you know him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll connect you.
Yeah, I know him, not super well, but we've, we've met a, you know, half dozen times or so. And in light of the recent arbitration decision, we're working to calculate the impact of that decision and also how it's going to impact the new contract. Because when the new contract was negotiated, it was not expected that part-timers would be eligible for certain benefits. So this was, you know, this would have, this is a grievance on the prior contract that will impact the interpretation of language on the current contract. So we're working on that and we'll have a, an update.
Can we backtrack and say what that is? That's the arbitration with, not arbitration.
Library.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's library. Yeah, so it's a decision that I forwarded around. It was a grievance that their interpretation of their prior contract was that part-time employees were eligible for paid holidays. And we did not, we didn't share that opinion and an arbitrator found in favor of the library union. So now they're not holding us to going back to the original, the date of the original contract, but they are, we're going back to, is it May of '22? May of 2022. And, you know, so we don't, we don't have any numbers yet, but it has to cover all current and non-current employees, so employees who have worked here in the past will have to, you know, find out where they live now and get them the money.
Wow, that could be, that could be a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's going to be incidental, but we're hoping that it's not, you know, that we'll be able to, to handle it.
Anybody? Anything else?
Nope, that's all I got.
Okay.
Just a quick clarification, sorry, it's Veterans Day of 2022, so November 2022.
So over a year ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. And why that date?
That's the date the, there was the first email to, I believe it was maybe Tom Younger at that point.
Oh, that was the first time that they brought it out.
Asking about it. And so that was essentially, although it wasn't officially a grievance, that was the first time that the concern was brought up and denied by the town.
Got it. Okay, thank you. As Chair, I'm going to hold my report for a little while and ask if anyone on the board has anything to report. I'll start with Gary.
All good.
All good. Deirdre?
Just some thank yous for town meeting, or do you want to wait till we get to it?
Nope, you can do that.
So I just wanted to first thank everyone who attended town meeting, who was there and was super engaged and attentive. I thought it was a great town meeting. So thank you to everyone who came. Thank you to our staff, Steve and Joe and Michelle especially, and our Finance Director, who spoke very well on the septic program, very appreciated, our Counsel Lauren Goldberg. And I also want to, and Roger Smirage, of course, who did a terrific job again as our moderator. But I wanted to also thank some of our boards and committees who did a lot of work and some, had some great comments at town meeting. And in particular, I want to thank the Finance Committee for all the work that they did leading up to it, and Jeff Calder specifically for a great presentation on the budget, clear and succinct.
Jeff, can you do that a little slower, please?
I'm not sure I follow that.
I forgot what Roger was doing when he asked you to do that, but.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I was moving through the.
Oh, through the budget line items, right, that's right. For the, for the holds, that's right. Forgot about that. So Finance Committee and Jeff, also for the CPC for all the work they did leading up to town meeting, and Rick Woodland for doing a great job in presenting all of the motions. To Andrew Ting, who did a wonderful presentation for the Board of Health, changing from elected to appointed, was extremely helpful, and all the work that he and the board have done in the past months specifically. And Phil Calaruso, Chair of the Conservation Commission, who had great comments and really helped to explain and clarify the, one of the CPC motions in particular. So I think great job done by all. If I missed anyone, fill in the blanks, but I wanted to thank those people specifically.
Thank you. Ben?
Nothing to add other than to echo, you know, what Deirdre just said about congratulating, particularly the core town staff and Steve's team for all the spade work that went into, you know, what was a very smooth town meeting.
Great, thank you.
My wife gave it an A-minus grade.
We had an A-minus?
I'm not sure what the minus was.
Yeah. She was missing the lunch.
Hopefully she's at this meeting so she can tell us what we can do better next year.
Right, oh, there's somebody attending, it could be her. Hopefully, maybe, is Roger coming today?
I don't believe so.
Don't believe so, okay. Nothing else? All right, let's move down, I'm still holding my Chair's report, to conduct the personal bylaw hearing for, personal bylaw hearing where we can discuss and potentially vote to amend and replace the Town of Wyndham Employee Handbook. Does anybody have anything on the handbook? Are we going to make a motion first? Yeah, go ahead, make the motion.
I moved to adopt Town of Wyndham Employee Handbook dated June 9, 2024. Dated June 9, 2024.
That's right now, yeah. Today.
No, that's the April.
April 9.
Oh.
April 9.
Sorry.
2024 and replace existing handbook dated June 2001. That's amazing.
I'll second that. So now we're open to discussion. Does anyone have anything to say? Have you reviewed it? Deirdre and I did not.
Deirdre, I know you spent a lot of time on that. The first page is really great.
Thank you.
Really great.
Glad you like it. Gary?
No, just checking that, so this has already gone through Town Council review?
Well, certain, certain sections that we needed, that we felt we needed them to review. So it's already been, it's a document that has already been reviewed by Counsel, KP, and, but certain sections that were specific to Wyndham that we had to make changes were reviewed by Council. And there's two sections, well, one section, one section that we deleted, that's not in there, it's been deleted. It's, it's a clause under Cobra and how the dependence of the individual who's seeking Cobra will be covered. We're unable to get a question, we're still working through Maya to figure that out, so we deleted it. So we can revisit it in a month or two when we have clarification and if the board decides we can insert that, it's only paragraph, maybe six or seven lines. But other than that, it's, I believe it to be good to go.
Thank you. Big job, multi-year effort's been.
Any other comments? Nothing?
Did you read the communications section?
Yeah.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, similar to the prior draft, it was, it was good and succinct.
Good and succinct. So did you have something to add?
I just wanted to, before we go, say thank you to Steve, the Chair, Diane Bucow, and also Deirdre Parati for playing a large part in this, helping to draft. This has been a long process, it's gone through several TAs. And as it was just noted in the motion, the last truly adopted handbook was 2001. So I think this is a great step forward for the town. I think it's extremely important and I'm happy that, you know, there still might be some very small edits, but this has been a long time coming and I think it's huge, actually. So.
Thank you, Joe.
Pretty excited about that. So I have, I have four edits that I can just fix. There are different wrong headings, there was an extra space, particular things. And then I have a question on Appendix A. I can't remember why the Code of Conduct policy is outside the document and the acknowledgement of receipt is before it. I can't remember why we did that.
Before, oh.
So everyone that gets it now is supposed to sign this and say that they've received it and they understand it and they agree to it. And then after that, there's the Appendix A, which is the Code of Conduct.
Right, so the Code of Conduct is the one piece that applies across the board, so elected-appointed employees. So that actually needs to be signed, distributed and signed sort of somewhat separately. So the acknowledgement is acknowledging the manual as a whole.
Yep.
And then everyone should also sign the Code of Conduct.
So that means we do need to add.
Appendix.
So we need to add a sign.
Should be a signature line on, there was a signature line.
Yeah, there's not anymore.
On the Code of Conduct.
So I can finish that up too, just make sure that, I couldn't remem, I knew there was a reason. But going through, didn't make it.
Clarify, it's going to be signed by both Union and Non-Union Employees, this Code of Conduct?
As well as all Boards and Committees, so it applies all the way.
I don't know about Union, though. Yes, Union?
No, not Union.
I don't, yeah. I don't know.
Well, where a Union contract is silent defaults to the Personnel Handbook, but the Union contracts generally cover pretty much everything that's in there.
So it can't hurt to have them sign it?
No, I think that that's fair.
Yeah.
Probably should have them sign it.
I think, yeah, so that's, that's in everybody, but the Personnel Manual just goes to employees.
Right.
Employees.
Non-Union, yeah.
Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second, we've discussed, anything else? Shall we vote?
Just that there's still space, because it wasn't posted that long publicly. If the public have comments or the employees have comments or questions, we can still take those in, I just want to be explicit, right? We can still entertain comments, even though we're voting.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's not like.
It's a living document.
It's not like we can't reopen it.
Right.
You just, I would just recommend that.
Yeah, just so everyone knows that.
You just need seven-day notice opposed to a 48-hour window.
I just want the, it to be approved on a certain date and then after that, if it's amended or added, we just keep that there so that it's a, so we know when.
Sort of adopting it tonight, but it's like a living document, as Deirdre said.
Yeah, yeah. So we're ready to vote, I'll vote yes. Diane votes yes, sorry.
Peter, yes. Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
It's unanimous. Great job. Discuss and potentially vote to approve the amendment to the Wine and Malt Liquor License to change to an All Alcohol Liquor License for the Wyndham Provisions, Inc., DBA Vin Fromage. So let's start with a motion and then we can discuss.
All right, I move to approve the All Alcohol Liquor License application for Wyndham Provisions, Inc., DBA Vin Fromage, as presented and to submit to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second.
So it's motioned and seconded. My understanding is, actually, can, can, would you guys like to come up? My understanding is, what do you have now?
We have wine and malt beverage only.
Okay.
The objective, I think from the beginning, and I sent a little bit of a letter to the Board, just circulating where our mindset was on this. You know, being the business we are, we're doing very well, we're blessed, the community's totally embraced us, it's been an incredible experience and we're super encouraged by where the business will be standing for many years from now. But having a small business and a small footprint, obviously we want to try to have as many offerings of products as we can to the consumer. And we've been getting a lot of feedback from people who come into store. And we're clearly a specialty store. We, from the very beginning, were interested in carrying spirits, but we did not feel comfortable necessarily coming forward in front of the Board and asking for that without you guys really seeing who we were and what we intended to be. So we thought our strategy was best to demonstrate exactly who we are, who we intend to be within the community, then come back and revisit it. It's really why we're here today. So we would just like to expand the product offerings that we have to the consumer. We're getting a lot of positive feedback from people. People have asked us about spirits on numerous occasions. Many people, as I mentioned in my letter, have mentioned they're not really big-box store people, or they don't necessarily want to go to a liquor store. We, we have an incredible Wine Director in Howie Rubin, who just has a vast experience, vast knowledge, so I believe it's something that we can really do something special in terms of what our offerings are to the community. So that's really our mindset.
So what kind of whiskey or Scotch are you going to have, just really high-end stuff?
Not, you know, I don't like to use the word high-end because I think there's, it's part of the thing we're trying to avoid with Vin Fromage because it looks high-end and we don't want people to get turned off by what they think might be elevated prices. It's not about that at all. It's really about just finding well-curated, small-batch, limited distribution artisan-type spirits that we think have a great value back to the consumer. Even with our wine point entry over there, people wouldn't realize this, but our entry point is $15 a bottle. And then we go up, we have some really higher-end stuff for people that want it, but I think we'd be looking at things in the spirit, obviously spirits are a little bit more expensive than that, even at the entry level, but we think we could find things that were very special to people versus high-end, if you will.
Great. Cool.
First, Ben?
So I know that the wine and beer is sold out of a cooler on the back of the first floor, if I'm not mistaken. Where would you keep, or would you propose to, to keep the spirits? And how large a supply at any given time are we talking about?
We, we don't think it's going to be a very big supply, primarily because if you go in the store now, you see it's well-packed.
Right.
It's very well-stocked and we're not looking to replace anything we have with spirits, we're looking to add it. We have a limited space on the second level in the front, we're facing windows, where we could believe we could do some beautiful shelving from the, one side of the property to the other side of the property and do something where it was really presented more like artisan, not packed in, stock shelves, but, you know, we're not going to be carrying brands like, they're the well-known brands, you know, like Tito's and Maker's Mark and things that people recognize. It's really not what we want. If you can go up the street and get it somewhere else, we really want to find things that are just smaller batch, a little bit more interesting type of spirits. But it would not be a lot of volume.
Another question. If, if we approve this at our level, I see that it describes in the motion that the next submittal will be to the ABCC. Do we know whether this would require any kind of, I don't know if legal counsel's looked at it, whether this would require any kind of special legislation? Because I know this goes back 15 years or so, but I know when the teahouse switched from a, essentially a packaged store license to a pouring license, or the other way around, I forget, that that required legislation, a home rule petition. So I just don't know enough about whether this particular change is something that would, can just be handled at the ABCC, or if there's something else that's required. I don't know whether, whether you've looked into that or not.
I, we will definitely look into it. It's not my understanding that it would require special legislation. It seems like, from what I'm getting, from our communication with the people in the ABCC who have been absolutely tremendously helpful, it seems like it's a nominal upgrade for the change of the license.
And we had KP Law looked into it early in the process and they, you know, appeared to think that Wyndham had the, has the licenses to offer and that it would be a Select Board and an ABCC.
I think that was when we didn't have any liquor licenses. That was like when we first brought liquor to Wyndham.
That may be, yeah, right.
I think that might have been it.
Right, okay, yeah.
Well, it's great to hear you're doing well. I mean, I, when I first walked in there, I was like, man, I would expect to run into a place like this in Northeast Harbor, Maine. You know, really.
We had some comments, it was interesting, but people, I think, tried to be genuine, but we had some comments that were like, wow, aren't you brave opening up in a small town like this? And, you know, it's for us, it's, you know, Maria and I owning the property and it was a passion of love, we wanted to do something for the community, we thought that the community could embrace and also be proud of. But fortunately, because I believe the type of team we've put together, we have products in there, they're drawing people from all over the region. So we've gotten great response and great support from people, I mean, all the way from Gloucester to Beverly to Salem, I mean, they're coming over, so it's, we're doing well with it. We just want to kind of continue on that path.
So my son's, older son's hobby is wine and he's been very impressed with what he's found there.
The master. I'd like to say, I've learned how much little, how little I actually know since I've opened the store. I was kind of thinking I knew a little something, but between Dan and Howie, I'm getting educated every day. I always said to my wife, if we're not, if we're not earning, I like to be learning. And I'll tell you, I'm certainly learning a lot. So it's been a great experience, it really has.
Great model. Deirdre, oh, Ben, go ahead.
No, you go, I've already.
No, I was just going to say, I think this is great and I'm very happy to hear you're doing well. I think it's wonderful for Wyndham, so thank you.
We're hoping to, we'll see how it goes, but we're hoping to, as warmer months come, we're hoping to do some events, maybe where we can get people engaged in the community.
Wow.
Yeah, I think there's going to be some really good things. We have a good lineup of our different ideas that we want to, we want to bring, yeah.
I was just going to say, I, I'm not a huge user of Instagram, but I do follow Vin Fromage on Instagram and whoever's in charge of that is doing a Cracker Jack job.
Yep, we have, we have a local residential el, elkason that's doing it for us.
Oh, good, yeah.
Who's tremendous, she's great. I mean, she adds so much to it and, you know, Dan and Howie give them great supply of content and, yeah, it's been really good.
Good, good.
Guess I'll have to check that out, too.
I'll have to check that, yeah.
If she wants another job, could use that.
Gary, anything?
No, we're good.
All right, we ready to vote?
Yep.
I'll vote yes.
Peter votes yes. Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes?
Gary, yes.
That's a unanimous vote. We will go forward with the application we submitted.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate your support. It means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Awesome. Feel free to stay or leave, whatever, don't, don't. Discussion on town meeting.
Thought it went really well.
Went really well, you thought it went really well? Yeah.
Yeah, same.
Yep, any, any, it's not Roger, that's the attendee, right?
No.
Okay. Anything you would change or any constructive criticism, feedback? Don't be shy.
Yeah, the thing that I heard the most, yes, and I realized I need to also thank Kirsten Alexander for her role at town meeting, and glad you walked in right then. The feedback that I heard the most was a little more communication ahead of time and I think when we are able to transition the website and hopefully move towards a newsletter and so forth, but so that people know more in advance what's coming on the warrant and can sort of have more time to absorb the issues, people felt that would be really helpful. So I hope we can do that next year.
Should we have like a workshop or something like that?
That might be.
That is what the warrant hearing is.
That's what the warrant hearing is.
That's what we have built in, but people, maybe you change the name, I always thought you should change the name.
Yeah, the warrant hearing doesn't lend itself to come and just understand what's going on, but maybe also something earlier in the process as we're formulating, you know, not as much the budget and so forth, because people expect those things, but sort of the other things that we bring forward. You know, maybe earlier on, some kind of public forum to say, oh, we're looking to bring the septic program, we're looking to do, you know, the.
Yeah.
I forget what yours is called.
The best communicator I've ever seen is Eric Tracy.
Yes, with the newsletters.
The amount of forums he's had for the new elementary school program.
It's amazing. And they're well-attended.
That's his, that's his job. Just so you know.
That could be our job, too.
It could be, yeah.
I mean, it is also our responsibility.
It is.
Not to do, you know, as many.
And it's hard, you know, but, good comment, yep, we'll try to squeeze that into the calendar, you just got to remember to look ahead and think about that. But it's hard because you make the calendar and then these ideas come up, like the septic and the plastic band and, you know, they just come up and we just keep moving, it's like a train keeps rolling.
I know I should know this, but the fact that we maxed out at 140 people.
Attendance is an issue, right? You know?
156.
156.
But max, and then by the end, it was like 82.
Well, it was four hours.
Thankfully, nobody called the.
Yeah. Call. So I have six things, just to think about, maybe you can share with Roger, too. One of my pet peeves is to start on time. So 1 o'clock comes, you hit that gavel, you start. There's a lot of introductory remarks. We hit quorum by 1:10, 1:12, and that's about the time we could have gotten going, but we actually didn't start the meeting until 1:00. So it doesn't seem like a lot of time, sometimes it could be more if you just dilly-dally, but it is hard and I would just really stress, start on time and people will learn to come and be ready on time as time goes on and it'll be quicker. My thoughts.
But if we don't have a quorum, we can't start.
You can start, you need a quorum to vote. You need a quorum to vote, you don't need a quorum to welcome, to do the pledge allegiance, to go through all the stuff, you need a quorum to vote, am I right?
I don't know the answer to that.
I believe, I believe that's the case. That's just my, something to think about. I would like to recommend to the FinCom that we use some slides during that part of the presentation. I watched the people listening, and there are some people who don't listen to finance and stuff, and that's fine, but there were people that were listening, but once the big numbers started coming, I think a lot of people, I think if you could have a slide similar to just something easy for people to see, that that would help to keep everyone's attention and maybe even grasp it a little bit more. I don't think that would be too hard, right? Okay.
That makes sense.
Similar to what the master plan did with a few slides?
Yes, yeah, yep, couple graphs, like what was in the warrant book, all they had to do was read the warrant book, but they're listening, not reading, and so if they had and so if they had something to see, too. I had a request and I think we've had this before. I don't love the idea, but it's not up to me anymore. Maybe try a weeknight for a town meeting?
Try what?
Weeknight, like during the week as opposed to a Saturday. That would mess up Hamilton, right? Because we've been doing it on the same day. It helps with the clicker cost. There's a lot of benefit to this.
Even harder time getting to.
I would think too, but this is the second time that it's been brought to my attention and I'm just going to throw it out and let you think about it.
I mean, I think expecting people to hang in till 10:00 PM on a weeknight is just, would be too much.
I do that in another community and it's, it's long.
Town is early.
It's long.
Yeah, that's optimistically speaking.
But talking about weeknight, when we had, didn't do it this year, we didn't need to do it this year, which is nice, but we forgot to have a rain date or a second date. If we had, someone had called quorum, we didn't have a second night to go to or a second day. So next year, you want to make sure that we have a second one reserved, buker reserved, you know, just in case, whether it's the following Saturday or some. Maybe if it's only a little bit, you do do a weeknight. I don't know. You could try that. The CPC was over an hour, over an hour. I really think the select board and the CPC need to sit down and discuss how to go forward with that. I think if you look at other communities' warrants, their, their articles are not like that for the CPC. It's not one article at a time, which doesn't mean that they can't discuss each article, each application at a time. But that was an awful long time to be on one article.
Can you send us something from Manchester?
I can, yeah.
Yeah, usually what it is, is, you know, like the first motion referenced the gra, if you, the first motion in the CPC article referenced a chart and there was four items in that chart. Traditionally, you'd, you would, the motion would reference the chart with everything. So what we do is we, we motion the, essentially like the.
Moving the money.
Moving the money. And then we motion each project individually, which doesn't need to be done.
So I didn't, I didn't time this, but my sense is that maybe half of that hour or so was spent on the one moderately controversial issue of the open space reserve money.
There was a lot of discussion on that, yep, yep.
And I, I don't want to interrupt your comments.
That's all right.
I have sort of one related comment to, to that, but I'll get to that after you finish.
So I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I also agree that the, the length of each motion, I, almost identical, nine times, takes a lot of time. Takes a lot of time because you read it slowly, you read it carefully and everyone listens and there's a lot of language in here that if it had been one and said, I moved to appropriate the sum of blank money from the community preservation funds to fulfill the recommended application as seen in the chart and further to authorize the select board to enter into a grant agreement, period. That's one. Now you've already gone through the, just like you go through the capital things, you go through all the applications, someone can pull it out. There could be more discussion, however you want to do it, but you, that, that's really not fair to the people that were there that wanted to hear other things, to stay on just that. You know, I think it really has to be, I really, I can't stress that enough because we, we didn't have quorum after the seventh, sixth motion. That's really early in that, in that section. Minor thing in the script, everyone said moved to blah, blah, blah. They didn't moved to it. They move. I move, something, something, something.
I, I did, I moved.
You said move.
Yeah, so did I.
So you say move.
Moved is move, you're moved, you moved his question. You moved the moderators when, when he read the article.
He read the article, but then it was written, I move, that, da, 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 da.
It just sounds weird.
No, no, but that, that's like the legal.
The legal, yeah.
Moved?
Moved.
Just moved. Not I moved?
Not, no, not that, either, either one is not correct, is not incorrect. Wenham historically says moved.
Yeah.
So.
They might. It's, it sounds funny because I feel like it should say so-and-so moved and then.
Because that was one of the cleanups we did was some of them said, I move. Some of them said moved. So the only ones we left, I move, was the CPC because of, you know, they were.
Gary, is that right?
Tied to the.
Moved? I think in the past, we've gone both ways as we've gone through town administrators and set up, so.
But I think if it sounds more normal through our speech, it would be easier to say it in front of people and for people to hear.
I moved. When'd you do that?
You did it yesterday. It's my, it's my language and my grammatical skills.
Bizarre.
Yeah, we can change it. That was just, we were, Roger pointed that out, that it was, it's more consistent with one's history that we use moved. So they were all, but again, if there's a preference, we can certainly change them all.
That's just, I'm just throwing all these things out there, you know.
That's why, that's all.
And then my last one before I'll pass it on is that I would love to see, and I, a little more interaction amongst the appointed officials up there when we present articles, rather than just moving the article. Similar to, you know, I'd like to say a few words about the article, but when I looked at it again, Roger really introduced the article and then the officials just, you know, Rita, I moved or I moved. I think it's probably to make it smoother, quicker, make people have less to do, but I felt like I could have presented what we were doing with the seal or the CPC, you know what I mean? I felt like I wanted to show people that I kind of knew what we were doing, but I don't know how that works with Roger because that would change his script.
Actually verbalize the commentary really is what.
Yes.
To a certain extent, yes.
Which, but that's really what he does, too. That's how he brings it forward and maybe that's the way, I know that's the way Wenham has been. I don't think it was always that way, though. I think there was a time that there was a long pause when people would introduce the article and depending on who was doing it, maybe that was the problem.
Right.
But, so just, those were just my six little issues. You can take note and do whatever you wish with that. Did you have anything? I'm sorry to point at you. I'll do the Disney point, the two people.
I had one, one thing, it's sort of, it's been touched on, but in the discussion at town meeting about the open space money, I forget which article it was, or is it part of the CPC articles?
CPC, yeah.
But the money being transferred to the fund that, over which the Concom has some control. It became evident to me anyway, in listening to some of the public's comments, which, you know, everybody absolutely has a right and should say what is on their mind, but it became somewhat evident to me that there was a lack of understanding of certain basic things that related to that article. So the article, as we know, was about moving money into this particular fund that, over which the Concom would have some role. But I think from comments I was hearing, I think some people in, at the town meeting really didn't understand the concept of chapter land and the right of first refusal, or even the fact that the CPA, you know, has open space as one of its priorities. So I only raise that because I think whether it's, whether it's sort of better verbalizing the commentaries or making sure that the commentaries themselves provide a certain kind of level-setting background discussion, or maybe it's part of, you know, whatever presentation's being given. I thought that that particular article to me was an example of where there could have been more explanation upfront about some basic things like the CPA, open space, chapter land, rights of first refusal. And that information ended up coming forward and I think Gary in particular did an excellent job at the end of that discussion of kind of summarizing and tying a lot of these things together. And I think if that had been done at the beginning, it may have shortened, it may have lengthened that piece of the presentation, but it may have shortened some of the overall debate and it also might have cleared up what I think was some confusion on the part of some citizens about exactly what is this about and why are we, you know, identifying properties and why are we talking about?
So I think that hopefully on our website, that, that information is going to be there.
True, yeah, right.
I think a lot of stuff is going to be solved by this website. Not to put any pressure on you.
Not to put any pressure, Gary.
One idea might be to have a short tutorial, video tutorial on, especially on CPC because it has such technical terms embedded in it, as well as, you know, so many different buckets of money, reserve accounts and budgetary. So I think maybe it's such a complex thing that even we need assistance from Lauren to get the nuances on it, that perhaps we ought to work on a short tutorial prior to next town meeting that say, hey, here's all the background on the budget reserve, the ten percent parts, you know. And of course, this one got more complex because I think the, the master plan and then the previous open space master plan got confused. As well as how the process of selecting the property was, you know, where was this matrix and so forth. So I think, you know, it was a very complex thing that we had hoped would go by simply, but certainly an area to work on that, both on the structure of CPC and on an individual motion like that.
Right. Maybe we could do a, a training and bring in the CPC people and invite people to learn about it. Where'd it come from? How does it work? What are all these things? You know, bringing that in is one of the quarterly things. Just an idea.
We had, we did that the one time with Lauren with the key players.
Yeah, we've tried.
Yeah, but let's, let's get it out there. Let's get, you know.
Well, I like the idea of the video tutorial because then people can view it on their own time as well, instead of trying to, thank you, get people in a room.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I like both. I like both. I like people to, to be with people. So, anything else on town meeting?
I would ask the town administrator, take a look, do we have a problem with Article 21? Because that was amended from the floor and I'm thinking the amendment, as went through, actually was outside the scope of the article as it was talking about term limits, except the amendment actually changed the length of terms on the body.
Length of terms?
Yes.
Because don't they have three-year terms?
No, they don't.
They have two-year terms.
Well, it depends because it's a very complex thing because that's why originally we separated it out between the select board appointees and the other committee appointees, because you have housing authority, planning board, that are working on five-year terms. Open space rec work on two-year terms and then the select board on our appointments might be for one, two or three-year terms. So that's why we had gone to the, let's just make it 10 years overall. But I think right now, procedurally, we are working on telling the attorney general three times, three years, which doesn't work because half the people on the board don't serve under those conditions.
So we go three, I'm disagreeing. I'm trying to remember, did we go three three-year terms or just three terms?
No, the amendment said, any member at large or designated after serving for three consecutive terms shall be ineligible. And previous, it says a term will be three years.
So if it's a planning board, it could be 15 years.
Well, yeah, so you got, what I'm saying is the wording doesn't match up with reality and I think we're going to have to go back next town meeting and try again.
I think we should have said that. We should have remembered why we tried to do it and why we tried to split it at the warrant hearing because I think Catherine came up with that article, that amendment, because she heard us going, wait a minute, three and three or nine? Whoa.
The CPC sort of can't be sort of distinct from the elected terms. Can we say that CPC is limited to nine, nine years beyond the CPC, but their other elected term can?
Well, what I'm saying is what is currently in the bylaws, which we may have changed at town meeting here by an amendment, doesn't match up with the structure of all the other committees. So the, the amendment said you can only serve three, three-year terms, but the fact is, the planning board can send their representative for five years, another five years or whatever.
Read the amendment again. I don't think it said three, three-year terms. You said three terms.
Yeah, well, it's, see, the amendment's in two parts. That's what I'm saying. All members of the community preservation committee shall be appointed for a term of three years.
Say that again, sir?
So, once again, all members of the community preservation committee shall be appointed for a term of three years. Any member at large or designated after serving for three consecutive terms shall be ineligible, blah, blah, blah.
It's nine years.
So that's why I questioned whether this amendment's actually effective because you're actually changing or attempting to change the bylaws for all those other committees.
But if you're, so if you're a member of the housing authority and you're serving a five-year housing authority term and you've been a, if, if the housing authority has a designate to the CPC, which I think it does, does that by necessity mean that that CPC appointee from the housing authority is on a five-year term or could it be?
It could be anyone.
Yeah.
Which.
This is saying they have to serve three years.
It's a question of whether the terms match up.
Right.
And then afterwards, how do you count them?
Right.
You know, if.
So, so the bottom line is, it's still a little bit as ambiguous and vague as it was to start. This is a tough one because this is the second time.
Right.
Wow.
Anyway, so I brought that up, that, before, I just think we ought to have some of our ducks in order before we take this back to the attorney general again and say, you know.
Well, you got to go to the attorney general with what we have, so that, that's what's going to go or.
But it could go with a, it could go with a separate letter of recommendation from the select board, right?
Then I don't know. I know you can make a recommendation towards special legislation, but I don't know if the attorney general does that. We could, we could ask someone to look into that. Make a note to ask Kirsten to look into that. She might have heard me. Anything else on town meeting? Oh, I can't believe, that's why you said.
Everybody come out Thursday to vote, right?
That is important to vote.
We have a very important, not only the election of the officers, but we have the, the question on town clerk on the board. So people need to come out for that.
So we have tons of minutes to go through, but I would love to ask if I could have five, six minutes to do my report.
Yes.
Give my thank yous.
Can I recommend the minutes? Because there are iterations. Can we just compile those through Michelle comments if they're not substantive?
So I actually, you have a bunch of comments?
I do.
Wow, I read, I read them all.
I'm, I'm guessing Deirdre does too, though.
No, well, I thought we looked, some of these we looked at before, right? And you added the documents?
Yeah, so a lot of these are the adding of the documents and getting the word perfect thesaurus up to the 99% level, right?
Yeah, whatever you want to do with the minutes, but, but let me see if I take a little bit of time or a lot of time. Because first I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to you guys, my select board colleagues, present and past, for being interested in being on the select board and for working so well together. I want to thank the administration and the staff for being so easy to get along with and super accessible at all times, very helpful. Not just you, but the whole staff. You especially, though. They're not watching. And for the community, who's all watching, millions of viewers, for their trust and support in me particularly. So I just wanted to share with you what my goals were in 2021 when I decided to run. And they were pretty much four. I wanted to broaden the views on the board. It had been the same kind of people, same people, not even the same kind of people all the time and I thought maybe I would bring some different viewpoints to the board. I wanted to bring more training to the town, to the, all the appointed officials and et cetera. I wanted to increase the connections between all the committee boards and commissions and departments. And I wanted to try to regain the trust and respect and make a more pleasant situation amongst everybody. So again, when I was elected, I assumed that made a big change. I thought that everything was going to be fine. I actually thought I was going to regain the trust and respect right away, just because that's who I was, but it takes a little bit more than that. But becoming a five-member board has opened my eyes immensely. It has been unbelievable, the potential that we have to bring in diverse perspectives and people is awesome. I think the ease of working with five people is amazing compared to three. The fact that we can have conversations and you can come to a board meeting with a little bit of ideas of whether you have anybody thinking the same thing as you or not, completely different than it was my first two years. So I really appreciate the town for doing that, moving it to a five-member board. I want to say I, I appreciate the trainings. I thought it was really important to, to bring in trainings for all the people, for the public, for all appointed officials. It's really important to learn and I think if they get training, they'll, they'll appreciate it even more. They can talk, they can even come in. But now I think we continue that training because we have this amazing position, person really, as our assistant town administrator, who can probably keep that going and have quarterly trainings of any type, CPR, first aid, you know, whatever you need would be awesome. CPA sounds like a good one. Connecting the boards and departments, I don't think I was as successful at. I really wanted to get on the agenda as a constant thing, reports of so many committees and boards and departments as a consistent basis to tell us what they're doing so they can see what we're doing and then there's a little bit more knowledge base. I think if everybody knows what everybody's doing, then people feel more comfortable doing what they're doing and not overreaching or underreaching. So it makes the government work a lot better. So the rebuilding of the trust and respect, it's just going to take time. Someone recently told me, I'm not very patient. But I do think that as role models, as select board members, we do a lot towards that. And I think we do that by the way we talk and discuss and deliberate within meetings. I think we do a great job allowing for differing opinions, coming to consensus and compromise is really important. I think the way we've moved forward with issues, we don't keep them on the old business for a long period of time. Things aren't circling and circling and not getting done is really important and I hope that you guys can keep that going. The way we stay within our responsibilities and don't jump into everybody else's business, let everybody do their work. We don't micromanage anybody, but I think what we could do better is expect and encourage all the departments, committee boards and commissions to do the same. Everybody has a purview. It's like an engine in my mind. If everybody in the car does the right thing and works perfectly, everything runs smoothly. When people start doing different things and, and, or different jobs and functions, everything kind of gets a little disjointed and it doesn't become as smooth. And I also think as role models, we've done an awesome job by lessening our reliance on Zoom and, no disrespect to Zoom, it's been awesome, but it has caused some interpersonal problems in the way people relate. So I think not making it constantly on Zoom, we have it, it's an in-person meeting. If Zoom goes out, we're still meeting, right? That's really important. If we could stress that to our other committees and boards, I think it would be important. If you could try to get everybody to meet in person and you Zoom for your guests, you Zoom for the one-off when someone's out of town or sick, that's great, but I think we need to get people back together because the more you're together, the better discourse you'll have. So we've done really well, but I think, of course, we could do better. So we've done really well, but I think, of course, we could do better. Like, if we didn't have the screen in front of us all the time, it would be easier to talk to each other if we were more in a, some sort of, I think conversations work better that way. So those are just those ideas.
We're never gonna lose that.
I think you can. I think you can. I think you could put it on someone's computer, and if there's something that needs to be shown, then you put it up there, but the board should be meeting as a board. Because what, what happened also with Zoom is you lost the fact that a meeting is a meeting and deliberations, discussions among those board members. It's not public discourse, it's not engaging with the public, it's not conversing with the public. There's a public comment section for that, but the meeting is the time, the only time by state law, that we can have a conversation about any issue. And if you keep looking up because someone, somebody flashed or a hand went up, or someone was chatting, remember when they were doing chatting too, it gets very distracting, and so you lose your, your discussion and your conversation, and then you've kind of, you're losing an opportunity to get work done. So that's, that, I don't know how we can get rid of it. I don't really know. I'm very not technical, but I do know that we can work better if we're just all looking at each other and not going, oh, let me check my phone, or let me check who's on the screen, or there's somebody flashing, or somebody walked by their screen and you lose a tag.
Our planning board... We do have people checking in on Zoom.
You mean your, your meetings, you're not all in person?
They're all, they're always in person, but we also do use some Zoom for outside vendors.
So that, yes, so that makes it easier. You can get, I, I agree with that, and we should use Zoom for that reason. But if that doesn't have to happen, you know the conversation's gonna be better. You know dinner at the table is better when people don't have their phone or their TV on, right? Like, it's all going back to getting people to go back together. So, lastly, everybody's, the way you guys pick officers going forward, now that we're a five-member board, is gonna be different. It's not the same old rotation. So that's one thing you have to do, but I'd like to recommend that you always have the newest person be the clerk. And sometimes there'll be two new people, but the newest person to do the clerk, they proofread the minutes, they learn the processes, they get connected with the administration. The best way to get, get going on the select board, I think, is through that, so I would just recommend that. So with all that said, whether you liked it or not, I had to say it, and I appreciate the time, I would just want to say that I would encourage anyone and everyone, anywhere, who has any bit of time or any bit of interest, to just go for it. Jump in to be elected or appointed or whatever. I guarantee that, and you probably all know this now, what you learn is huge, what you gain is immense, and what you have to give is minimal in comparison. So it's really something to do, really. I want to thank you.
Can you send me that?
Thank you. Send you my notes?
Yeah, please.
I'd be happy to. Thank you! Yep, they can come in. We're gonna go through our minutes, so, quickly, but they can come in. Do we, so what do you want to do about the minutes?
I think it's easier, we, please, for coming in, right?
Well, they have 10 minutes.
That's, that's, wow.
Oh.
About 24.
5:24.
So they have six minutes. I'm so sorry. I was going by that.
So I thi, it may be easier if we, I'll just take your...
You want to just take my notes?
Yeah, take the notes.
Okay.
Go back and then do another iteration.
Okay. Did anyone have anything that was weird? Pete didn't have anything at all. Wow, I don't know, maybe it's...
You know what my impression was as, as I read them, all eight?
We've done a lot of work.
Yeah, we've been busy, yes.
It's pretty awesome. Thanks for, these guys for throwing all this stuff on our agenda. It's been working out really well.
It was like when I wrote the town report a year ago. Going, I went through all the minutes, and it was like, holy smokes.
Mine was easy. I asked for help. Anyway, so are we done? Is that it?
Looks up.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I move...
A what? Are they part of our meeting?
Yeah, I think we're gonna stay in session for the meeting.
Don't adjourn yet. Let them in.
All right, so I think we want to move this.
So we want to add the letter from Vin fromage to the minutes.
Okay.
Because he referenced it.
Okay. Add the letter...
But I'll put that in.
The Vin fromage letter?
Oh, we have, I have it.
Okay, we forward to us.
I'll forward the email.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen the letter either. It must have just...
So who's taking the minutes? Do you want my minutes?
I'll take the minutes, and...
Do you have a paperclip? Does anyone have a paperclip? You do?
Yeah.
Front row. First people in take the front row.
There's about 30 people, so we gotta move.
How do you want, you do whatever.
We can sit in the back.
Here you go.
I know, I don't know what happened there.
They want to tell me we're gonna move these tables like this.
Do you want us to just...
Because we gotta, we gotta, we gotta get a bunch more chairs. We gotta set a bunch more chairs.
Okay, all right. You didn't tell me all that, or I wouldn't spoke.
Should we vacate?
Wow. Do we need to get out of the way? I think we're gonna pull it back some. What are we doing with this thing? I guess so, yeah. How are you?
How are you?
Doing good?
Yes, I'm buying chairs, bro. Yes, I'm buying chairs. Yeah, just one chair.
Sitting back here, right? I think this is, uh, three years of bad luck. Hail and farewell. Okay.
Where we going? This is all this. Is this your stuff? Do you need this?
No.
No, 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 it's standard, yeah. It's standard, yeah.
Breakfast tea.
Deirdre, I'm sorry, you can't come up for a drink?
I know.
Maybe we'll...
Those dying kids.
I can text you where we go. I don't know when you're gonna come up for a drink.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know yet. The side of Gary has to pick it. Where we going? Where we gonna go at?
Joe's Pizza! Mrs. Foley, Mrs. Foley, there's seats up front. But there are, there are plenty of seats up front for those of you who are still standing. I know the officers won't sit down, but now, never.
Michelle, you coming in?
I have, I have, for the people that are getting sworn in, and then I do have on the, like, the life-saving commendation as the mayor and so on. Yeah, I can get you everything, 100%. Yeah, so one of the officers couldn't come, so you can actually take a, just take a picture of it, probably, if that helps. Yep.
Everybody's pamphlets, put today's ceremony on the table, if anyone wants to grab one. Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to come over here. If I could have everybody stand, we're gonna first start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could have everyone still stay standing, just for a quick moment of silence for all the officers that have lost their lives in the line of duties this year. We're at 32 since January 1st. Thank you very much. I'm gonna have Dean Peterson say a few words.
Please, be seated. We in New England have an awareness of seasons. There is fall, winter, spring, and summer. But some of us in New England have two other seasons that they live with: black fly and mud. So there's six in New England. But this afternoon, we are here because people have entered into another season of their life. They have become part of the Wyndham Police Department. They are retiring. They have died. They have done faithful service to the police department and to the community. And they're all embarking into a new season of their lives. As a chaplain of the PD, I don't pretend to know what your prayer language is, nor I assume that I know it. But I would invite you to join me in prayer for those that are going to be remembered as they enter a new season, retirement, as they are promoted with new responsibilities, as they're acknowledged for what they've done, and in remembrance for this other season as they have died. Let's pray. Gracious and ever-living God, on this day, so bright, so delightful, a great spring day. And yet today, we are reminded of faithful service. We're reminded of people who have decided to be a part of the Wyndham PD, of people who served and have died, and of people who have served faithfully, not only for the PD, but also for the community of Wyndham. So receive our thanks for each one, and I pray for your blessing upon each one as they enter this new season in their life. Amen.
Thank you, Dean. I can't put into words how fortunate we are, not only to have Dean helping us with the police department, but just to have him as a, as a friend, as a resident in town, as a mentor, as somebody that has a newer officer here, that I immediately knew was someone we could go to. Chief Perkins introduced us, and I can't put into words how much I appreciate it, and the folks here in town appreciate that. Just as we get started, I want to, first of all, thank Deputy Chief Luke Contoni and Executive Assistant Jackson for helping us put this event together. It's been a long time coming. I wish we could have done it sooner, but the time is here now, and, and I can't say how happy I am and how appreciative I am that we were able to get this together. I'd like to thank the board, Assistant TA Pasmaro, TA Pulos, Fire Chief Kavanaugh for being here in attendance. I'd also specifically like to recognize Chief Peter Cons and Chief Kenny Walsh for laying the foundation for what this agency has become. Also, retired Chief Perkins, he couldn't make it tonight. We're not standing here if it wasn't for your leadership, your professionalism, your guidance to get this agency to where it is. And then personally, just the men and women of the Wyndham Police Department for everything that you've done for me here in my seven years here in town, for the incredible people that we've brought here and got on board, the people that we're recognizing tonight, the promotion, the new hires. Everything about what we are is because of what you, you do every day. And whether you're part-time, full-time, retired, the officers, every officer here that's worked here, whatever badge there is, risk their life every single day they go out, and you, you never know when you come to work if you're gonna go home, and sometimes we don't hear that enough, sometimes we don't say that enough. But I know, you know, I can't put into words how much, you know, myself and the, and the deputy appreciate that, so I'm, I'm just beyond thrilled to be here and to recognize some of the incredible things that, that the men and women of our police department have done. One of the people that is not in this booklet, and she's gonna kill me for doing this, Sue Hershey. I see her back there. I would like you to come on up, if you don't mind. I told you she was gonna... Just a small token, this has nothing to do, and can't possibly put into words, what you've done for this place, what you did for me here as a new officer, as a new leader here, and what you did for everybody standing in this room, and beyond any of that, you're the nicest person in the world. And, you know, there's gonna certainly, without a doubt, I know ahead of time, gonna be somebody that if I forget, I'll apologize ahead of time, because we can't possibly thank everyone, you know, that's, that's got us to where we are now in our own lives, personal, professional, what have you. My wife couldn't be here tonight, she's working. But to be the spouse of a police officer or a first responder in any fashion is very, very, very difficult, and with four kids of my own and coming and going at all different hours and days and holidays and weekends and just all the craziness that this job entails, it's, it's the, the people at home that, that make it possible. So I know everyone here appreciates that. First and foremost, we're gonna start off on the agenda. We're gonna bring the folks up that we hired. We're gonna have... We're gonna have Tyler Solis, why don't you come on up first, Tyler? So. Now, we were gonna, as I mentioned, we were gonna do this ceremony a little earlier, but one of the factors that had us push this out is we wanted to have Tyler finish up and get out of the academy because we thought that was important to get that done, and then we were able to schedule it and get rolling. So Tyler's already been sworn in, if you will, but this is, these two hires, and we're gonna talk about Matt next, that are, we just want to recognize and do a formal pinning so we can have that opportunity for these officers to spend it with their families. So Tyler, he was, worked at the jail over in Middleton for about a three-year period. Went to Framingham State, got a bachelor's degree there. Went through a strenuous hiring process. We put a lot in place. I've always been taught, deputies always been taught, we would rather go without than hire somebody that shouldn't be wearing the badge. And I'd rather explain to my bosses here and the people I answer to why my overtime budget is what it is as opposed to rushing and hiring somebody that shouldn't take on the responsibility. I can confidently tell you in this case and with the people that we've hired since the deputy of I have been in place that I am supremely confident, ethical, hard-working, incredible people. So Tyler, we're gonna have your girlfriend, Nadez, come on up. Okay? And if you can, do you have your badge for her to pin on? If we can get a few pictures of that. And we want to congratulate Tyler on just being an incredible hire to be, and I'm looking forward to the future of Tyler at the Wenham PD. Matt Kerkorian. So Matt's been with us coming up on two years. And like Tyler, I feel like we just keep hitting win and scratch tickets with Matt. He, you know, he came to us when we first hired him. He had a bachelor's degree from Pittsburgh State. He ended up getting his master's degree after he got on with us and finished up that extensive hiring process as well. He was officially hired, yeah, it was January of '22. His dad is here. If his dad could step up. Martin. And he's just gonna stand with Matt. And again, Matt's been just such an incredible personality as far as how he interacts with the other men and women of the police department, how he treats the public. Just such a nice young man, and we're so happy and proud to have him on board. So his dad's gonna ceremoniously pin the badge on Matt. Perfect. Alright. Alright, so. Bot Corners, if you could step up, Bot. Now. This is very hard for Bot because he, when we talked to him about this, I thought he was gonna toss me over a chair because he doesn't like this stuff and he didn't. The first thing I think Bot said to me was, I'm just doing my job, please don't do this. And I said, that's great, I appreciate what you said, we're still doing it. And this is, that's a testament to his character and his humility. Officer Larry Nestor, who couldn't make it, is also recognized here as well. So we're bummed that he couldn't make it tonight, but he had his other job. This speaks to the relationship with Wenham Police and Wenham Fire. I thank Chief Kavanaugh for bringing this to our attention because sometimes we get so busy with other things. And Bot and Larry, for that matter, weren't the type that would knock in our office and say, do you know what I did last night? Did you hear what I did? It would never have happened. So Chief Kavanaugh provided a nice letter that brought it to our attention. And then the deputy and I spoke about it, and we thought it definitely warranted recognition, and that's why we're standing before you here tonight. I'm just gonna read exactly what the commendation says. It's a lifesaving commendation award in recognition of Officer Bot Corners. On Friday, February 2nd, 2024, at approximately 6:00 AM, emergency personnel were dispatched to a residence in Wenham for agonal breathing. Officer Corners and Nestor arrived first on scene to find the individual still in distress. Both officers quickly assessed the patient and initiated rescue breaths while using a bag-valved mask. These officers continued to administer rescue breaths until personnel from both the Wenham and Topsfield Fire Departments arrived on scene. Once on scene, personnel took over emergency care. It was these combined efforts from both the Wenham Police and Fire Departments that provided the best opportunity for the patient to recover from their illness. On behalf of the citizens of Wenham, the Wenham Select Board, and the Wenham Police Department, with deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to duty, we proudly present this lifesaving commendation award to Officer Bot Corners. And this is what, to have family at these type events, this is what makes it special because if you're a dad or a mom, to know that your kids are seeing this, I explained to Bot, we had talked about it, that this is stuff like with Chad, who's gonna be coming up next, that they're gonna have these memories, and it's so, so very important. So that being said, Sergeant Labrie, come on up. So. This has been a long time in coming as well, and Chad was promoted, coming up just about a year. What happened, and we'll talk about Sergeant Mashane next. Sergeant Mashane's retirement created this opening for a new sergeant. And he retired in last March, a process was initiated. And we did a very thorough process to fill that vacancy for patrol sergeant. Detective Labrie, at the time, he was ultimately selected after talking a very difficult, like I said, and lengthy process. When promoted, at that time Sergeant Labrie was an experienced police officer with ten years of full-time experience and seven years of part-time experience. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Salem State. He's also worked in investigations and worked for Nemlec. Sergeant Labrie was officially appointed the position on June 5th of 2023. And beyond any of that, okay, as soon as, you know, Chad assumed this position, he was genuinely concerned about doing things the right way and keeping the levels of communication open with the deputy and I and what we were looking for in a leader. And he's checked every box, and he's done a phenomenal job. It's a very difficult balance to lead, and it's even a difficult, more difficult balance in a small agency to be a sergeant when you're lurking side by side with the people you're also leading. And you can't put a price tag on someone's ability to make that connection. And Chad, I can't put into words what a phenomenal job that you've done in the leadership and professionalism that he's not only bringing now in his current role, but I'm confident will continue in his future here at Wenham PD. So congratulations. If we could have Chad's wife and if the kiddos want to come up as well. Janelle and.
Still here.
Good stuff. My pleasure, congrats bud. Chris Mashane, you're next on the hit parade. This is, he dressed up for us. This is a big, this is a pretty big deal. A testament to the people that are here tonight is, a lot of people were very passionate about wanting support Chris in his retirement. And he put a great amount of time and dedication to this department and to this town. And they did a really nice job putting a plaque together with his badge that outlines his service as far as he was hired as an auxiliary in '93, a reserve officer in '94, and then he was full-time from '05 to 2023. And they did a really nice job. And, you know, what I always talk about and the biggest thing, you can teach people to be police officers, but you can't teach people to get along with other people and treat them well. And Chris, always a class act, and as new people to this agency coming from the outside, he was good to us, he's good to everyone that worked for him, he was good to the public. And it's everything we would have wanted in a sergeant. So I'm very, very proud to have worked with Chris and provided this plaque. Mrs. Foley. Come on up. So I can't thank you enough for coming. So Buzzer, who was his nickname, we put a nice plaque together. He worked as a reserve officer from '85 to 2016, okay? Everything, and I met him numerous times, I did not unfortunately get to work with him. But I could tell very early on what he was thought of in this town, in this agency, in this area. He was very well-known. They used to call him the mayor, I think, with everyone that knew him. And the dedication that he made as a coach, as a principal, as a, you know, a mentor for the kids in town, they all knew who he was. And I'm so glad that you were able to come, and hopefully you'll hang this in your house with pride. I think it's a testament to everything that he did for the people in this community. Thank you so much. Did I forget anything? No. We have a little cake and some water here. Again, I can't thank, I should say a huge cake and some water. I can't thank, again, everyone for allowing this to take place and for everyone that came out and please hang out a little bit and enjoy meeting with people. Thank you very much.